...supposed to regulate, there's no regulation going on. You have the lawyers and the courts and the justice system, which would next be a barrier, and they would sue the industry, get the papers, get the documents, and force them to behave safely. They're gone, and even the press has been eliminated. The pharmaceutical industry is now the single biggest advertiser on TV, radio, television, and newspapers. I had breakfast last week with the president of a network news agency, and he said to me, seventy percent of my network news revenues in non-election years come from pharmaceutical companies. And he said, "I would fire a host on my network who had a guest on who lost me a pharmaceutical client." So the press has been disabled, the lawyers, the courts, the judges have been disabled. There's nobody left between that rapacious industry and that Maine child, except for the mother. And now, what they want to do, not just here, but in 37 states with 101 of these bills, is to take the mother out of the equation. And of these mothers that you see here, ninety percent of them are not ideologically anti-vaccine. There are people, the ones that I've met all over the country are people who had neurologically injured children that are vaccine-damaged, and they don't want to give that same vaccine to the younger brothers who have the same genetic vulnerability. And yet, if they go to a doctor and say, "My kid got an autism, my older child got autism because of the vaccine, and I don't want to give it to the younger child, and I certainly don't want to give any more to him," the doctor's going to say, "CDC says that's impossible. You're wrong. I have to give him the vaccine." And that's the position you're putting there. And to me, we're hitting the wrong target here. The target we need to be hitting is the regulator and corrupt, the corrupt regulator and the rapacious industry, who ought to be able to persuade us, you know, in a marketplace, that this is a good idea. Everybody wants to vaccinate their children. Nobody wants to get meningitis or watch their kids get meningitis or any of these other diseases. We all do it, but they need to convince us to say, and you know, these are not ignorant people or conspiracy theorists. They have read, they've read the science, the same science that I collected in this book. The science is out there for anybody who reads it. You talked about the Swedish studies, the dangerous, the Scandinavian study. That study is the archetype of fraud. You can take, the only studies they have are epidemiological studies, which are population studies, which are notoriously susceptible to fraud. You could prove that sex doesn't cause pregnancy. From an epidemiological study, you just get rid of all the pregnant people, right? Cigarettes don't cause cancer, just get rid of all the people with cancer. That's what CDC did with that study. That study, I'll tell you what they did. They said, they looked at, in 1993, Enmark and Sweden removed thimerosal from all their vaccines, but then the autism rates rose 1,300 percent. But, and so they said, therefore, it has to be something else. And that's what they tell the American public, and that's what they point to, the Matson study. The Matson study had proved to say, well, here's what really happened. In 1993, Denmark, because they saw that, they believed thimerosal was causing autism, banned it, and they also made autism a mandatory reported illness on the National Disease Organization for the first time. So prior to that, the only autism cases that were reported were in, where people were so debilitated that they were in hospitals. But after 1993, they counted, everybody and doctors had a mandatory duty to report patients who came in and had autism. So that's why the numbers spiked. And by the way, CDC did a follow-up on that study called the Grunberg Study in JAMA Pediatrics 2013. But here's what the Grunberg Study showed, and these were CDC scientists. They've been very quiet about this study. What the Grunberg Study shows is that when they banned thimerosal in 1993, the autism rates dropped 33 percent, and they've dropped every single year since they've banned thimerosal. And that's the real science now, not the phony scientist that was ginned up by the CDC in order to, you know, to fool people.
Thank you. We're getting a little off from some of the questions. Are there questions from the, for our guests? Robyn Sanderson.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate you. Now, my understanding that the Vaccine Injury Fund that is administered by the federal government has a very, very high threshold, and that leaves many parents without any recourse, is that correct?
Yes. I don't like that, but even CDC says that between, only between 1 and 10 percent of people who have serious vaccine injuries, even apply to that court. And some of the activists here, including Ginger Taylor, and she can, you know, tell you this, since this process started, and it's become very publicized in this state, they've been contacted by people from all over the state who say, "Hey, my kid was vaccine-injured. You know, even the papers show they've vaccine-injured, but I didn't even know this court existed." Everything that happens in that court is secret. You know, they seal the cases afterwards, so nobody can look at them. By the way, that court, a lot of reporters said, you know, that the agency says that vaccines don't cause autism. The Vaccine Court has said vaccines can cause autism to vulnerable children, and that's exactly what everybody's been saying. How many, what percent of the population that is, we don't know. If you look at, you know, if you look at what happened in Denmark, you can make a pretty good prediction about what would happen here if we actually removed the thimerosal from vaccines.
So when we're talking about these bills and removing these exemptions, is there any, is there any movement down there at all to listen to the critical voice, to really understand and put validation to all of these parents who, his teenage daughter has been injured by thimerosal, who, when you look at some of these websites that show a rate of, their child died with what's classified as sudden infant SIDS, within a very seven window of these vaccinations? Is there anybody down there who is listening to these parents in particular, and actually, other than yourself per se, willing to stand up in the CDC and say, "This is wrong. We're doing something..."
I would say no, at this point, and for a variety of reasons, but really, there are some, you know, there are, there are a few bad apples in CDC who have everybody convinced that this is okay. I'm not saying the whole agency's wrong.
But not everybody can be bad down there.
Oh, that's right. I think, I can tell you that people are by name, and they, you know, but let me just say that this is something a lot of people don't know. CDC has control of a database called Vaccine Safety Database, which has nine million children, children in it, and has all their medical records. And in one week, if CDC wanted to answer these questions about the connection between autism, ASD, SIDS, asthma, all these diseases that started, food allergies that started in 1989, the year that they changed the schedule, if they really wanted to answer those questions, all they have to do is open up the Vaccine Safety Database. But they did one study on the Vaccine Safety Database, and that study showed an 1,100 percent connection between people who got a little thimerosal and people who got a more thimerosal, and their autism rates. As soon as, and they did that in 1999, it was called the First Stratocyst Study, as soon as they realized what was causing the autism epidemic, they shut down that Vaccine Safety Database, and they handed it over to a private company called the American Health Insurance Plan, and they paid $20 million a year for that Ahab to manage that database to make sure nobody can get into it. And their position is that it's not susceptible to Freedom of Information requests. So they have the answer. They have the answer to all these questions, and they've never, ever done a study of vaccinated versus unvaccinated cohorts. And that's what they need to do. And that's what, and I can tell you something, that Maine could do that here. Instead of doing this bill, you could say, "Let's look at Maine children, because you have the databases here, and say, and look at vaccinated versus unvaccinated cohorts. So before we compel people to do this, we actually know what the risks are and what the rewards are." Because there's definitely rewards, in my view, to being vaccinated, but we have no idea what the risks are. But we know, you know, from these people, that there are definitely risks. And we know from the Vaccine Courts, who've paid out $3.5 billion, and even CDC says that's 10 percent. They had to get rid of all the autism cases because it would have bankrupted the Vaccine Court overnight. So they just had to get rid of them, like saying, "We're not going to cover those." Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Kennedy? Representative first.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Have you found a country in Europe or somewhere that doesn't have our CDC but might have vaccines that don't have thimerosal and also don't have the mercury in it, that you've had some decent, you know, studies, I mean, reliable double mind studies?
Yes. The Scandinavian countries have eliminated thimerosal from vaccines. Chile, a month ago, voted to get rid of all thimerosal from vaccines. The state of California has a law eliminating, seven years ago, that passed eliminating thimerosal from vaccines. Unfortunately, they have an opt-out, where the public health service in California can declare a state of emergency and give shots, thimerosal-laden shots, even though they're banned, and they've done that in three of the last seven years. But still, we should see a drop in California of autism cases. You know, if we have good data, we should see that drop. The problem is that, well, I mean, there's a number of problems, but, you know, the states have the power to say, "We're not allowed thimerosal anymore," and that's another thing I think Maine should do, to really eliminate it.
Representative Kim?
Thank you. And that's where I was going to go with my question, is why not just ban thimerosal? Would we still have all the immunizations available, or are there certain immunizations that require thimerosal as a reserve?
None of them require it. The flu vaccine is now down to about, I think, 69 million doses that have thimerosal and probably 100 million doses don't have thimerosal. So if you, if you're going to get flu, you should ask for thimerosal-free flu. There's still three of the pediatric vaccines that have trace amounts of thimerosal, and, you know, and those should be eliminated. And one thing Maine could do is say, "We're not going to use them anymore." And CDC would just have to, you know, come up with a solution for the state of Maine. So I have here, in addition to this book, which I, you know, I'd love to read for you, I brought this because I heard testimony before, but these are 38 peer-reviewed studies, many of them in the best publications in the country, that directly connect thimerosal. And these are not epidemiological studies, these are toxicological, pharmacological, biological studies that connect thimerosal exposure directly to autism. I would urge all of you to see the film Trace Amounts, which we will provide you. If you watch it, you will not vote for this law, because it shows the level of corruption of CDC, and you do not want to turn children from the state of Maine over the vaccine industry. And this is a very, very well documented and researched film. It took 10 years for them to meticulously research, nobody's argued with the facts, and it is shocking. And we're showing it today at 6 o'clock, which we will provide to any legislature copy of the film that you can view at home with the entire family.
Any additional questions, Representative Kim?
Thanks. Can you review with us what has thimerosal in it? Because I'm under the impression that most vaccines for children do not...
The only, well, for kids, I'll tell you this, the tetanus vaccine had bolus doses. So be very, very careful about the tetanus vaccine. If I was exposed to tetanus, I would not take that vaccine. Instead, I would get, you know, go on Cipro, go on antibiotics. But it is low...
...during the children and autism. Has any adult ever developed autism from a vaccine with thimerosal? It's a multiple dose dial for flu?
That is a good question, and there is evidence that the answer to that is yes. And I would urge you to go look at this film Trace Amounts, because it will answer that question for you. And there's a very, very good case, I can, of exactly that happening. The vaccines that still include trace amounts of thimerosal, which is one month or less, are de-tapped, hid, and hepatitis B. And as I said, when they took the bolus dose out, they put bolus doses of aluminum in, which has a volatile and explosive and synergistic neurotoxic impact when combined with mercury.
Any additional questions from the committee? Seeing none, questions? Thank you very much. Okay. I'm sorry, I said in the beginning that we can't allow any outbursts, whether that's applause or anything else. Thank you very much for respecting that. I will say, if you're standing, I just want to remind you, we have, the Welcome Center is open for overflow room. In fact, we've had security staff by, ones already let us know that we can't have, we can't have, we can't have standing crowds, this is a fire hazard, so. And we do have some empty seats in here, so if you want to grab a seat, you're good. We have one more person here, neither for nor against, and we'll move back to proponents of the bills. And also, I just want to say, since we are approaching lunch, members of the committee, I'm going to, if individuals who want to grab lunch and bring it back, that may happen. So if we're eating lunch in front of you, please, please excuse us, I think we're going to continue working on lunch, so that we're sure about it. All right, welcome.
Thank you. And I'm Janice Woodley, the Legislative Liaison of the Autism Society of Maine, and I am sorry that I'm standing between you and lunch, it's not my favorite spot to be in. So I will make this as brief as possible. And I am testifying on behalf of the Boarded Directors of the Maine Autism Society. Although there is no single specific cause of autism, current research links autism to biological and neurological differences in the brain. And magnetic resonance resonance, imaging MRI, and positron emission tomography PET scans show abnormalities in the structure and function of the brain and frontal lobe. In some families, there appears to be a pattern of autism or related disabilities which suggests there may be a genetic basis to this disorder. And I'd like to just say, I am testifying neither for nor against on all three of the bills that you are considering. Several older theories about the cause of autism have now been proven false. Autism is not mental illness, and individuals with autism do not choose to behave differently. Autism is not caused by bad parenting. Furthermore, no other psychological factors in the development of the individual have shown to cause autism. And I just want to read you a few of the statements. The following is the National Autism Society's statement on vaccines, and I quote, "Individuals living with autism need help today. There is a clear and present need for the government, scientific, medical, and autism societies and communities to probe further into all possible environmental causes of autism spectrum disorders in a fair, unbiased, and thorough way, particularly because findings may help us approach treatment and prevention more effectively." Now, I'm going to quote you a statement of Robert Rang, who is the Chief Science Officer for Autism Speaks, which is a national organization. "Over," and I quote, "over the last two decades, extensive research has asked whether there was any link between childhood vaccinations and autism. The results of this research are clear: Vaccines do not cause autism. We urge that all children be fully vaccinated." And Bob Wright, co-founder of Autism Speaks, makes this statement, "Scientific research has not directly connected autism to vaccines. Vaccines are very important. Parents must make the decision whether to vaccinate their children. Efforts must be continually made to educate parents about vaccine safety. If parents decide not to vaccinate, they may be aware of the, they must be aware of the consequences in their community and their local schools." And the board of the Autism Society of Maine, which are your friends and your neighbors, has issued this statement on their position about autism and vaccines, and I quote, "The Autism Society of Maine believes the final decision lies with the family. We believe it should be an educated decision based upon the facts. Autism Speaks has summarized published evidence that vaccinations do not cause autism." If you have any questions, ASM can provide you additional information prior to the work session, and I thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you very much. All right, now we'll move back to the proponents. So first, we have Lynn Connolly, a bit of her. Welcome. Oh, if you have, yeah, we might actually, thank you very much.
Good morning, Morse. Good afternoon, Neil. I'm Lynn Connolly, I'm a resident that occurred in January's maintenance board of LD471. In 2008, I became pregnant with twin boys. Unfortunately, there were complications with my pregnancy, and they were born at 23 weeks, in which was small to survive. So when I became president, president, pregnant. In 2009, I was understandably a lot more worried about the risks, and thanks to my niece and my team, the infant was born, and perfectly healthy, that she had 36 weeks. We had heard all the information against vaccination, against vaccine, and we were torn. We already knew that we were going to feed her organic food and use organic products on her, so to avoid having any unnecessary chemicals enter her system. We were still hurting from the loss of our sons, and we just wanted to do everything possible to protect her. So when she was born, she offered, the hospital offered me a Woben Cop vaccine, and I declined it, because I was concerned about how that might affect her coming through my breast 膜. As it turns out, I wasn't able to breastfeed, but it wasn't for lack of priming. She, knowing that she wasn't getting all the antibodies for me, my husband and I started researching vaccines on our own. Dr. Bordeaux, Southern Maine Health Care, was extremely helpful, and she was able to give us concrete facts based on science and large-scale studies. Husband and I were able to have an open conversation with her about our concerns, and our peers were completely put to rest, and we decided to go ahead with vaccinating her on the recommended schedule. So when it came time for her 12-month appointment, she had a really bad cold, and we talked to Dr. Bordeaux about our concerns, and with overwhelming her immune system at that time. And Dr. Bordeaux understood how we might feel this way, and helped us figure out a way to delay the live vaccines until she was feeling better, so that was a couple weeks later. So we were very happy that Dr. Bordeaux understood our concerns, and heard us, and worked with us, instead of feeling like she was forcing us to do something that we weren't really comfortable with. So that kind of, that just cemented our confidence in our decision to vaccinate her. Part of the reason I'm here today goes back to swine flu, which was impactful effect when she was born. I had to go back to work when Fiona was eight weeks old, because she was too young to get a flu vaccine. Because she wasn't able to get the antibodies for me, she was completely unprotected. I was in tears at the idea of sending her to a daycare center with so many children, when she had no way to fight off this flu, she was exposed to it. We were lucky enough to have a friend who agreed to watch her for a few months, but most people don't have that. And to me, that's a perfect example of why her immunity is so important. I believe it's the responsibility of those of us who can be vaccinated to protect those in our society who can't be, for whatever reason. In general, I agree that parents should be able to make the decisions about their own children without interference. However, when that decision can negatively affect someone else's child in a life and death way, it's no longer individual family's decision to make, in my opinion. Most schools don't allow peanut butter because of allergies, but they basically allow a child to bring in measles if they're unvaccinated. I encourage all my friends who are wrestling with this decision to find a pediatrician or family doctor that they can trust and respect, so that they can have the important conversations. I don't want parents to make this decision to not vaccinate based on scare tactics. Doctors should be given the opportunity to at least address the false information. My hope is that someday, the only reasons for not vaccinating are sincere religious beliefs and medically necessary reasons, but until then, LD471 will help educate the parents with the truth. Thank you. Give them the opportunity.
Thank you very much for your testimony and sharing your story. Representative Kim?
Thank you. So thanks for that story, which is really about the autonomy and justice part of that triad, where the justice party is doing the best for the most people, and that's really what you were talking about, versus the autonomy. And they're, you know, they hit each other like this, I mean, all of these things, the autonomy, the do-good, the do-no-harm, the justice, all smack right in this whole conversation, they fistfight together. So thank you for giving voice to that justice part, doing as much good for the community and the community.
And so I think it's important for doctors to at least be able to have the opportunity to talk to parents about them, too, because that was the swing decision for us. It was an important moment for us to have a supportive doctor who knew that we were hesitant.
Yeah. And you chose one who you could have that conversation with.
Yes.
And thank you for sharing that as well, because that's such a gift.
Yes.
That's actually very common, isn't it? You get immunity, because, you know, that's what pediatricians do.
I imagine they get it all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Jordan Peet. And after Jordan Peet, we'll be hearing from Alyssa Goodwin, Chelsea Kidd, Allison House, Anne Crocker, Tina Pettengale, Sean Rock, Norma Dreyfus, and Toco Somar.
Great, all right, thank you. So my name is Jordan Peck. Thank you, everyone, for having me here today and listening. I am a resident of Scarborough, and I'm here to talk in favor of LD471. I'm doing this from the point of view of a father, when my daughter was born 20 months ago today. It became an immediate part of how I defined myself. My goal in life is to protect and provide for that little girl and my wife. And, you know, I'm actually going to divert a little bit from my written testimony based on things that have been said, because I have another perspective that's important, I think. But, you know, in the end, we are constantly depending on the government to help us make choices to avoid damage to our family. We look for regulations on toys, seats, food, the water we drink, countless other things. And a lot of times, that's easy, because we're looking for protection from companies against what can be done to the consumer. This is a hard issue, because we're looking at problems of what one person can do to another. When I was in Boston, we had a huge scare before moving up here to live life the way it should be. We had the Boston Marathon bombing, and we locked ourselves in our apartment for two days in fear. This actually, from my point of view, was nothing compared to the fear we had when my daughter was six months old, and we had a breakout of the measles in the Boston area from somebody who spread it in a Trader Joe's. We then found out about people whose offices were being closed, friends and family who couldn't go to work because of the measles, and then we could no longer see them because we were afraid of measles. My wife was afraid to go to the supermarket, because my daughter could not be vaccinated until she was a year old. We were calling our doctor, begging for a vaccination, and they couldn't do it. This caused us to miss days of work. It caused me to fear that when I come home, now dad the protector is dad the liability, because I was the one who was out in the world, and I was coming back to my home. So we've talked a little bit about this issue of herd immunity. Yes, we might only get 85 percent protection from a certain issue, but that reduces the probability. All we do in socioeconomic systems is deal with probabilities and reduction of probabilities. I have a PhD in Health Systems Engineering from MIT. I studied the spread of diseases, I studied these issues. I know the huge issues. I also know the public does not have access to the studies that we've been referencing. They don't have access to JAMA. I don't have access to the articles I need. I have to ask my doctor friends in med school to get me the articles I need. All I'm suggesting by supporting this bill is that fam- All I'm suggesting by supporting this bill is that families, no matter how intensely they want to do the research, will only be able to rely on publicly reported issues from the press that none of us seem to trust. The pro-vaccines and the anti-vaccines don't seem to trust the press. And we don't have access to all the articles, we don't know about special videos or documentaries, we don't know about all the books. We have to trust, at some point, our medical providers. If you don't like the medical provider that's talking to you, get another one. That's the key to having our public health survive. And I think that asking somebody, I hold dearly to the right to choose for my family, and I respect that for all, I would never want to take that away from anyone. But a bill that just says, yes, I talked to this person and had the chance to explain the issues, doesn't require that the doctor agree with what that, that patient was asking for, that family was asking for. I think that's a minimal cost in order to support a very important public health issue, that the information is skewed in all sorts of ways, and it is a broken information market, and the government needs to protect us from that broken market.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing no questions, thank you very much for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Alyssa Goodwin of Brunswick.
Thank you. Good morning, or, no, good afternoon, sorry. Senator Brackey, Representative DeTeen, and the new members of the committee. My name is Alyssa Goodman, I am the resident of Brunswick. I'm a pediatrician at Martin's Point, and a member of the American Academy of Pediatrics Council on School Health, and the position for the Brunswick School Department. Today, however, I'm representing Martin's Point Pediatrics. So as you can probably imagine, this point in the day as a pediatrician, not a day goes by where I don't have this very conversation multiple times. So I speak from that perspective as well. So somewhere along the way, I feel we got lost. Scientists worked for decades to develop safe and effective vaccines to prevent the most common and severe pediatric illnesses. These are the same vaccines that many parents I care for in my practice currently delay or refuse, and in my practice, often without really a clear understanding of the vaccine importance, safety, and efficacy, and often of the diseases that they protect against. From the first effective polio vaccine to the current meningitis immunization vaccines work. As a pediatric resident trained just 15 years ago, so much of our work in the hospital was spent on learning how to treat infants and young children presenting what was called at the time fever without a source. Because in the era before routine hidden pneumococcal vaccination, it was impossible to tell in the acute setting if a child had a routine benign virus or fever, or a severely threatening illness. These serious infections often presented with nonspecific symptoms like high fever or irritability. Our routine workup included blood tests, urine tests, and often a spinal tap to rule out meningitis, while these children waited in the hospital receiving IV antibiotics, pending their culture's results. This was the best we had. This approach was the best available based on then-current standards. But as you can imagine, it led to many unnecessary, in retrospect, hospitalizations, and a very heavy emotional and financial cost. We cannot afford to go back to these days of the devastating, of devastating disease, particularly now that we have vaccinations that are safe and effective. Hemochloes influenza type B, pneumococcal pneumoniae, measles, varicella, polio, these are real, serious, and often life-threatening illnesses we now rarely see in practice due to routine childhood vaccinations. The practice of pediatrics has been transformed during my lifetime due to these safe and effective immunizations. And as an anecdote, before I was a pediatrician, I was a college student. I'll never forget the day, my junior year, when, in the era before the meningococcal vaccine, my friend Nish died of bacterial meningitis. She presented with a headache at 4:00, and by the time she arrived in ER 11, that night, she was dead. We just can't let stories like this happen, when they can be so easily and easily prevented. So as I was saying, I think many parents I care for today have never heard of hidden meningitis, but they've heard a lot about the alleged risks of vaccines and the ingredient list, and that causes a lot of worry. I think that for many patients I take care of, they come in with concerns about stories they read on the internet, and are being bombarded with social media, often with misinformation and scare tactics. So I wanted to say, LD471 is how I practice, it's how I live my life. I practice in a group where we've decided to take care of all patients, no matter their philosophy on vaccines, and I feel like I, that is the minimum that we should be doing in holding our families and providers accountable. I counsel patients every day on this decision. In addition to presenting real scientific evidence, I tell them that I vaccinated my own children on time, because vaccines are safe and they work. And as we've talked a lot about today, with the current measles outbreaks, we now see the reality of the human and financial cost in deferring in reducing vaccines. Now is really the time to act. Obviously, we've heard a lot of information on both sides of this. But we need to strengthen laws requiring appropriate vaccination, childhood vaccinations before school entry. This is important, obviously, that we've talked about many times today, not only to prevent illness in the children we're vaccinating, but also due to all of the reasons you've heard today, to protect those around us that can't be vaccinated, either due to age or illness. And so I feel at a minimum, LD471 is something that we need to seriously think about, although I, I also feel that LD606 is reasonable legislation for, for many reasons, to improve childhood vaccination rates. I'll end with a couple of thoughts. The childhood vaccines are safe, and we do stand out on that note of evidence. And routine childhood immunization is about saving lives and preventing our disease. We need to work together to protect our communities and our citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, thank you for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from Chelsea Kidd of Camden.
Rockland.
Rockland, no. Someone wrote it down, Rockland. Someone else apparently, though.
Okay. Good afternoon, Senator Brackey, Representative-